Welcome. February fifteenth to me. Winner's schedule meeting and call the main again, welcome everybody, we want to welcome our guest and audience and our guests on Zoom. And also any KJW, any media, I don't know rest of the world, but they're too many as they usually are and anybody else. Let's see, call the row.
Davis, Crockett, St. Columbia, Franklin, he's here, Ford, Heatherling. Four present, two absent.
So the first thing on the agenda is the treasurer's report, treasurer's present tonight, so we'll move that to the next meeting. So on the agenda tonight, what we've got are three. I asked that we put this on here because we have some matters of urgent action and really the biggest one of those is servers. In the past week and a half, our service has gone down, our district court has not been able to meet. We've had a lot of difficulties with any kind of services or by inside or externally with our customers due to the server problem. As you know, we've discussed this issue for a long time and it is something that has to be acted upon. It's requires it for us to continue to function as the services. And so we submitted like and I think in front of you, all the information that we have about that matter. So I want to direct red deck, red deck, red to that first under servers. Emergency procurement to store government services, ordinance to way bidding contracts, et cetera. And the only thing I would add to that. Remember, just because we passed this tonight, we have to order these things. Where we used to be able to count on something in a day or two, that's no longer the case. We've got shipping days, maybe we'll get them in two days. But we've had tremendous problems, as has the entire world with supply chain issues. So once we order, you got to order them, then they got to get here, then they got to be installed and they've got to be updated. And 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 so forth and configured properly and networked. So we're still not out of the woods, even even if this is approved tonight, because we've got a while before we'll actually get them in place and get everything up and running again. Haven't said that it should be, everything should be in your packet.
I have a question for her. Okay, I noticed you said that district court and all all this was because of the server, right?
That's what I was told by the score, servers are down.
Well, I I I think the service had had to have nothing to do with what is it called, virtual justice? And I think though, when you got it, it was posted on Facebook that that because we failed to act, that virtual, I mean, that because the service wasn't got, it blamed on us. That's not true. I would like, this this body has always helped and did what it's supposed to do. But I don't think it's a service to us when you get on social media and say it's us, they didn't want to do this. But we ask you to give us this in a timely manner, but virtual justice is a software. Has nothing to do with a server and I'm pretty sure the city had some kind of internet access. Because I was here last week and they had internet access. The server works to provide internet access. It does not have to do anything with a software, virtual justice, I'm thinking is a software. See, am I right, is virtual justice a software issue, not a server issue?
Virtual justice is software, the software company is from Bittby, Arkansas. I don't know the precise issue is going on in the clerk's office. Virtual, to answer your question, virtual justice is a software.
So has, are you aware that Mr. Tuckey have this as well? Is other districts down? Are we the only place that are down when it comes to virtual justice and having court? Are we the only courts shut down?
I do not know what we're on the court that shut down. District court, most district courts use virtual justice software. I don't know if there's any, I haven't been visiting other district courts and I haven't heard where the other district courts have been down.
Have anybody heard from the district court judge here?
He sends emails regularly. He sent three or four emails because he counsel court yesterday. He counsel court twice last week.
But he also, he also has court in Marietta. He has court in McAllen as well. Okay, so were they, were they system bands where?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so I'm just trying to make sure that it's not a server issue.
But it is a server issue.
Mr. Mayor, I I I'm saying this, you, the city has, they say y'all have internet access, right? Y'all can, y'all can get it right. But to get to the end, you have to use a server, right?
We would suddenly go on the internet, I don't, I don't know how that works.
Well, other parts of the nine one one, all sorts of stuff, it has to work on a server. I I may, I would really greatly appreciate it that if you, when you tell things, don't try to, when you don't, when we don't act as fast as you want us to act, that you put us out here with the same council that boasts to get give raises and every other thing that you ask for. But don't bash us because if we're a team, make it be a team, don't bash us like we're not doing this and not doing this. It it it, let me finish, let me finish. It bothers me when the newspaper and every other outlet says, the people that support you say that the council, the council, the city council, that means all six was around this table, didn't want a server. You are, you you have to stop letting your people say that because it doesn't make you look good. It doesn't make us look good because everything you ask for, we do it. You ask for a budget, we give it. It may not be what you want, but we give it. And I mean, I I I have no time for that. I can take criticism, but the people around this table were diligent to help make this city run. When you don't get what you want, you 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 do us like that. And I'm asking you, in front of my colleagues, stop doing that to us. Just like these dog kills, everything else you ask for, when you don't get it, you're going on a rage. Stop doing us like that because we're a team, we're a team.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Let me clarify. This is a software and it's software is based on servers and in the cloud. Servers run through a network which are connected to the internet. Anything that is connected to a server, which is the hardware, including software, including the internet, including other things. And let me finish, the district court clerk who runs district court, reported to us that the servers were down and therefore in this building, therefore we could not hold court. We also have had other issues with the servers being down. And it is a fact that I have been asking for approval for new servers for months. And asked for more information, provided all the information, tried to answer all the questions. Those are just facts, I asked anybody. But you want to hold me, your job is to hold me accountable, my job is also to hold the council accountable. If the council doesn't do what the council should be doing, and this is something we have to do in order to government services for the city and the citizens of the city. We have to have servers that operate. And our, you know, the folks that know more than I do about this have been warning, warning us for months. And if not more than that, it just would happen and now it has. Miss Crockett.
Since I was the one that made the paper to say that I was the one that objected to the service, I need, I'm with Mr. Franklin, if you're going to point something or if you're going to say something, you need to say it accurate. I did not object to the servers or the hardware. To the way that you were presenting the information, it was not clear. I asked for the information, it was supposed to be given to us prior to that. Let the record show that we just got this information tonight and sit at the table. So don't make it seem like that we're just going against you because I'm not, because I know that it all needs to be updated. But don't give us partial stuff and think that we're just supposed to take your word on it.
It's probably, I'm with you on that. It it's to me that, you know, you can put a nice song and dance together for the people out there. But hey, we make sure that the things are written right. We're not doing anything, you run day to day operation and it bothers me when people are here bashing us because you on this reelection thing that you want to make us look horrible. But we're not looking horrible, just like your partner with that newspaper with these dogs, got the dogs on the front of the newspaper doing that. Y'all, y'all got to come a little bit better with y'all coming because it doesn't make us look bad, it makes y'all look bad. So I I really.
Any other questions or comments about this?
We need to do, take action on this.
No, I'm, actually, I'm going to defer to Mr. Valley on that one, I think, I'm not aware that we think it, when we had a an ordinance to way bidding.
Way bidding, is that what we have to do?
Yes, sir.
I think we have to do ordinance on that.
Because we didn't know who was going to get the bid.
Who got the bid?
So we got it.
Nobody. He said, do you have an ordinance and no, we don't. He said, make a motion though to ask the city attorney to prepare one.
Well, if I could, excuse me, this is an emergency and Mr. Valley, this is an emergency, I don't, I'm going to turn to you. Well, this is, we, again, remember, we have to, we have to order them, we have to pay for them, we have to install them. We're talking about a lot of time here and in the meantime, district court and all the people, not to mention other issues we've had with software that operate the city. Those are all impacted by this, so I would, I would defer to you because it is an emergency, how we can move expeditiously.
Well, I'm just being handed this this evening and it's dated in November. The thing I've been doing is taking out my laptop, as you could see, I was about to to begin to work on the ordinance as you all were talking. But I would need to know which one of the the pieces that you were looking at. I would gladly be working on it while we're in session. That's, that's no issue for me.
Okay, so we'll make sure you've got, I mean, this is a compilation of all the information, emails, so forth, that we provided before, but it's just a compilation of all of them in one place, one time. So I'd refer you to.
Which, which, which one are you recommending?
Well, I'm recommending the same one that the farm recommends and the only
What's the price of that?
The only, the only exception that would be is if they come back and say, because the bids were so close together that the other one would be quicker than, you know, then it might be worth the small difference in price to get them here earlier. Now that you're down. So basically, what I would, what I would recommend and then I would report back if that happens. The prices also change daily.
I understand, so this is contract with VC three. And the one you recommended is twenty eight thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars, twenty three cents, is that correct?
It's not a contract, what we did was ask them to find us quotes from hardware vendors. And they got us two quotes and that's what's, that's what's in your packet.
No, I'm saying you're asking to enter into a contract with them for this twenty eight thousand.
Not really, I mean, it would slow it down. I just need authorization to pay them so we can order the servers. There's a server my five thousand dollar limit, I can't do about, without your approval, that's really what I need.
Right, but I'm saying, you're still contracted with them for services, that's, that's all I'm trying to.
They're just installing it.
You got the contract with saying you're going to buy this stuff, that's all you're trying to do. You can't get, because if we just say go bad, it can be sitting out there on the side of the building. And you ain't contracted with nobody to install.
I'm not, if it slows down, I don't see the need, I'm not I don't see the need for a contract. A lot additional paperwork, but all I know is, is we're just going to write a check. And then the same price in both estimates for the installation. So it would be like having a, having a contract with somebody at Walmart that you bought a hardware from and somebody else to install it. If you want to do a contract and doesn't slow down everything, then I don't have an objection to it.
Yeah, the contract is an agreement, all I was saying is, is this the agreement that you're agreeing to, the twenty eight thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars?
I would say up to that, in case that gets here quicker and I can get it quicker. That's the only way.
New York moved the next issue I look for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stipes, I know you have a question. Well, again, this is a compilation of emails. So depending on where you are in that packet, we had the most recent.
I don't see a time when, is what I'm asking, if it said this quote is due for thirty days and this dated for November the first, twenty twenty one. I'm asking, is it, did I miss something or is there a time quote in this, but I know thirty days is past. Couple of times.
We've had, we've had current.
Well, how do we vote on this and it's expired? That's a hard business. How do we?
What we're asking for is for you all to approve up to that amount with that entity.
Okay, so what happens if we approve what's there and you said Tuesday, I mean, he said that the price changed today. So we vote to do a contract up to twenty eight thousand dollars in change, because I see Dale's amount has gone from twenty something to thirty eight thousand, so what do they do us? To have twenty eight thousand dollars to purchase twenty eight thousand dollars of stuff and then when you put the beat, you try to purchase it, it costs thirty eight thousand dollars. I I I asked, I went into a conversation about twenty minutes on last meeting to ask if we could have it lined out, if we could get it to show, because a one email that you gave us in Dale's bid, it said that the three thousand, six hundred and something dollars was included in the bid. But the bid, the paper that you gave us had the bid plus the three thousand dollars. And I asked for Claire to do all of this and to, that's been two weeks ago and to this day I have not gotten it yet.
You've gotten the everything that you've asked for.
No, you have not, so don't even go on the air saying that you got me everything I asked for, you have got me nothing that I asked for.
What is your question tonight, Ms. Crockett?
Why we don't have what I asked for?
What is, did you want? What is your question that you need information on? What is the question?
The same thing that I asked you last week.
And what is that?
Uh, two weeks, two weeks ago, ma'am clerk, do you have minutes?
No, but you asked for a contract.
To show it broke down where, and and we still don't have it.
I don't, are you asking this for a contract? What you, let me finish, what you want tonight? It doesn't matter about the past, what you want tonight is a breakdown of what?
What we spend in our mono, what you asking us to spend mono.
And you have a breakdown of the hardware, the most recent quote available. And you have a breakdown of the cost of, that the company is going to charge us to install that hardware and that's the same in both cases. So tonight, though, in what Mr. Valley is typing, you need to know the amount that the, that the company is installing it, what they're charging, their services, right? And then you need to know up to what amount the hardware will cost, is that correct?
You gonna tell me what I want.
I'm asking you, I'm not telling you, I'm asking you. Up to, say thirty thousand, and then if it's over that, we'll just have to meet again. If it, whatever it is, we'll report back to next meeting, if it's, if it's thirty thousand or less. And if it's, and if it's, if it's, if it's over thirty thousand, then I won't be able to do it. So if we do thirty thousand and the, you have it broken down between, and you subtract the cost of the service to install it. Is that, will that make you, will that satisfy your answer or to information?
Don't, don't worry about me, I'm just one, don't worry about me.
No, I'm, I am worried about you, I just, I want, we're doing the contract or we're doing the ordinance right now.
How can he be doing, so he don't even know which.
That's why I'm trying to clarify, this, that's what I'm trying to clarify. You want in this motion, a clarification of how much the company is going to get to install it and how much the hardware, is that what you want broken down?
That's what I asked for.
Okay.
Is it, is it in the language that you have? Yeah, we can do it in the ordinance.
Maybe don't worry about me, because I would not be following on this.
It's my understanding, the hardware is going to cost twenty eight thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars, twenty three cents.
No.
And that up to thirty thousand dollars is what you're asking for approval. You would take a few thousand dollars for the installation. That's what you plan to put into the motion, Mr. City Attorney, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir, except that, we were discussing was
To spin up to thirty thousand.
Up to, in case the prices have gone up, if they've gone up beyond that, then we'll have to
We're going back to the council.
Correct.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
If I may, counsel, what the mayor's pointing out in response to Ms. Crockett's question, Ms. Crockett, what he was pointing out to me that he wanted to be put in the ordinance on page ten of seventeen, page ten of seventeen, in the first paragraph where he, where the person addresses Ellen, in that we said note on the second line, it said note that this price is not included, the project fee quoted thirty six hundred, six hundred ninety six dollars. And he says for both, that would be the price of of the project fee. And so the question is, the mayor's saying up to thirty thousand. My question for the man for the body is, does the thirty thousand include the project fee or you're saying that thirty thousand plus the project fee? So okay. So, so the question, it would seem to me would be up to thirty four thousand, thirty thousand for the hardware, four thousand for the installation is what he's asking for up to.
Up to, but not to exceed thirty four thousand dollars.
Including the hardware and installation.
Okay. That would, that would cover it, yes, that's correct.
Okay, see, I, I, oh, excuse me. On that same page, Mr. Val.
Yes, ma'am, who told me?
I'm saying, the next paragraph says, using direct from Dale and including our project fee, the price will be twenty two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. So am I missing something right there?
But our tables, Crockett, is the project fees the same in either way? And I know what you're arguing about the information on your desk, I understand. All I want to do is move forward so we can get this problem settled for our city.
We cannot get the problem settled.
And you just told me a few minutes ago that what you needed to know was a breakdown between the hardware cost and the cost of the company to install the, the service fee. And so I asked Mr. Valley if he could distinguish from those two things, break them out in the ordinance that he's drafting on his computer right now.
I understand, okay, I understand exactly what you're saying, mayor. But you're asking us to approve up to thirty thousand dollars for hardware. And then up to four thousand dollars for installation fee. But I need somebody to come go with me where this says, using direct from Dale and including our project fee. The price will be twenty two thousand dollars, so how do we get the third of them?
The hardware is twenty eight for the hardware.
Why are we using the high B? The one that gets provided on this anyway.
Well, as I said earlier, because of what Ms. Davis said, the, the quotes only get for thirty days. We've had, in wild inflation, the prices might change again. So if we put up to a cap, then if it's over that, we can't do it and if it's so whatever it is, we'll send it out to you, but if it's over that, we'll have to meet again because it won't be approved. But it should be approved, at least, I would think, I would hope. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I mean, I guess I'm not understanding that in the last meeting, but within two weeks. Last when we were done something that's current, instead of this November and December and we were talking about that, you all were talking about this February first.
And that's what I asked for.
And anyway, and we talked about it probably enough, so why can't we have something current within two weeks?
Because we've been asking for something current almost every two weeks since I went there and it's, we're just have to make a decision.
Well, how can you make a deal with someone?
Last, last two weeks ago was a compilation of everything on it, so that's what we do. Everything add on it, that's what we concentrate on and that's what you have before you.
How can you make a deal with someone and they can't give you current information, it's not, not in fact. This is all an easy say of it, it's not valid after thirty days. Why can't we get something from, that's a February? And then the things that you're saying.
I'm saying we've had to ask for that continually because we keep saying, we keep not making the minds about what we're going to do. And here we are now and we are out of time.
This says November, man, I'm saying.
That's when we first started talking about it, estimates. But after a while, they're not going to keep updating estimates because they have other clients, they have other people who, who, who do business with. So at some point, we have to make a decision and now we're at the point where the servers are crashed, the acts actually crashed. And we're not able to have have city services. And all this is, is going to be a grander state law, gives the mayor, I think, up to thirty five thousand or thirty thousand now. I haven't actually read it, but they just raised the cap. The only reason we're having this discussion is because mine is at five thousand. And the contract level, if it is a contract, is seventy five hundred, so. And the contract level, if it is a contract, is seventy-five hundred, so that's the reason you're here, that's the reason we're talking about it. Since it is over my cap, y'all have to approve it. And because of inflation, because of supply, uh, issues, and because it is now an emergency, we're probably gonna spend more, uh, because we have waited so long. We have tried our best to get you information. And our intent is there are two government, big government vendors out there, CRW and Dell, uh, based in, uh, the VC Three Company, that is the IT Services Company for municipalities, submitted to both of those, uh, government, uh, procurement entities, what it would cost, based on what we need, after they did a needs analysis. And this is, this, this is the term, as of the most recent quote. Either we're gonna do this and solve this problem, or we're not. If it's over thirty, or if, if you wanna make it something else, we'll meet again. But I'm just, I'm just saying, we've already been down almost two weeks. It'll be at least two weeks, most likely, if we approve this tonight, because we still have to order it, install it, update it, configure it, network it, all those issues. Um, it is a crisis.
Well, let me, can I just ask one question? And I, I think this is, is picking back on what Ms. Davis said, and she did. You're telling, you, you're sitting here telling us that, when we, when I requested the information two weeks ago, that somebody contacted these people to get what was asked of them, and they refused to give you a bid, another bid.
Two weeks ago, we were embarrassed to ask them for an updated bid. Ms. Crockett, we've been, we've been doing this since November. You didn't ask for an updated bid, you asked for more information. You asked for a compilation of every single thing we've ever done, and that's what you have.
No, I do not.
That's what we did, is what you asked.
Okay, no, you did not, and don't go on.
What do you really want? And you said a down between the service fee and the hardware. And so I asked Mr. Valley if he could do that in the ordinance, and he said he could. I can't do it, you won't if you don't approve it.
Mayor, you're trying to, okay, from what you gave us, and I didn't get this, I didn't email anybody, I didn't text anybody, I didn't call anybody, but from what you gave us, what you're asking us to do, there is a twelve thousand dollar difference in what's on the paper. Now, if, if, if I, cause I'm, if I'm understanding this, Mr. Val, do you see the center so that I'm talking with me this?
Yes, you, you've read it already for us, so, using, using Dell Direct on page ten of seventeen, in the middle, including the project fee, the purchase price, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay, I'm just, and, and I'm just trying to understand where, how do we get to thirty-four? If it's telling you, if we use this Dell, we can get the, get it for twenty-two. So how, what, how do we get to thirty-four?
If that do it for twenty-two, that's what we'll do, but I don't think they can do that.
Well, you're, and, and one more thing, I, since I'm the one that they said was doing all objecting and all that, you're sitting here tonight telling me that no one even attempted to get an updated bid. You know, I just need a yes or no answer.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And if we did, they haven't.
But see, we the one that's not, we're the one that's no co, not cooperating. We're asking for things, you give it to us tonight at six o'clock when the meeting starts, is when it was on the stable. It was asked for
We sent it out beforehand, I think.
No, ma, no, sir.
But what, but, what we're being asked to vote on is
So when did you get the?
What I'm saying, this is the same thing we had before. I asked for something totally different.
So in other words, I've already given it to you.
You had given me this, you had not given me what I asked for. You were supposed, you were talking, discussions, and I think you, I don't know if, some of us got amnesia or what, but the discussion was that you were telling us that the, the bid from Dell did not include the three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollar installation fee, but clearly in the email, it says it does. So I wanted you to show me where they said that it didn't, but you didn't try to get that to me. You didn't do.
We got you all the information
You got, no.
We have on it, and, and, and I will, I will make sure it's broken down for you, so you can have that information once it's actually done, if that, if that, I mean, we want to be transparent. They did an email where they said what the fee was in either case. And what the hard, the most recent information we have is that two hardware prices and the installation fee is the same for VC Three on each, uh, each estimate.
And that's what Dell doing the installation, right? Uh, whoever.
VC Three is gonna do it in both cases, and they charge the same fee regardless. It's the hardware cost that, that changes. And it changes daily, so if you give us a top amount you will deliver with on both the service fee and the hardware fee, and you prove that, then we'll move forward. If you don't do that, we can't. But if we don't, I'm just saying, like I've been saying since November, we're in a very serious situation in order to supply services to our citizens, our most basic job.
I'm gonna take a picture of these and put them on Facebook, like you put, on here, on both of these, the one that's for twenty-two thousand and the one that's for twenty-eight thousand. Both of those bids include the project fee, so where's this eighty-four thousand dollars coming from?
That is the, that's the project fee, it's broken out per your request, you wanted to know what it was. It's the same for both, and it's gonna be in the ordinance that way.
No, what I'm, okay, Dave, if that's the case, the, the ordinance should be up to twenty-four thousand dollars for software and four thousand dollars for, uh, for, uh, the project fee, because the total bid with the project fee is twenty-eight thousand.
If we approve that tonight, will you support it? You just said that's what it should be, and I'm asking you, would you support it if that's what it said?
I'm just trying to see where you getting your numbers from. Like I said, people all the time, I went to the math class, I went
That would at least maybe get us started, and then we can bring out whatever else we want. But I don't blame them if they think we're never going to do anything. They, time is money, not to mention the hardware, which is what changes, changes every day. And it gets more expensive, not less. And now, the servers have crashed. It's not a question of me warning them, or them warning. It had, they have crashed. We are not able to have district court. We are not able to do our basic job as a city because of this, and it has happened. It's not a threat, it's not going to, it's not a warning, it's not a fear. It has happened, and if we'd have done this in November, December, January, would not have happened. Now it has.
But Mayor, you're trying to make it seem like it's our fault. You have informations, and then you want us to just do it because you said this is what you wanna do. You tell us daily, we are responsible for the, we are responsible for the, uh, finances of this city. So if, every time you come in here and push something to us the last minute, want us to prove it, then three days down the road, you come back where the city council approved it, but it, it, it wasn't right. So, because, you, you get angry because I'm asking for clarification, that's all I'm asking for.
I'm not angry at all. So we, we gave you everything we had on it, every single piece of documentation, and you want documentation. We gave it all to you, it's right in front of you. Per your request. But it's not gonna solve the problem if we don't buy servers and get them installed. And that's what thing, that's the thing that we have to decide on tonight. If we don't, district court will continue to languish. That means fines won't be collected or levied. That means the people who are being paid to work won't have a job to do because there won't be a server on which to do this. And, so, I mean, these are very critical, very basic decisions. We've been discussing it since November. We've been trying our best to get you the information that you requested. It basically is very simple. VC Three went out to two of the biggest government services vendors in the world, in the country, in the country, but in the world too, and asked for, uh, asked for a bid on what we needed in terms of hardware that will be supported, that all the software will be supported on, that will be added and networked and so forth, and secure. Because our hardware, our, our hard drives were about to crash, and were no longer supported by Microsoft or any of the other companies, and so the software on those hard drives were not supported, which means they were vulnerable. And in fact, that has happened, and they charge us one fee then, they charge us one fee now, as far as I'm aware, it's never gone up, maybe it has, but I know what it is now. And it's, uh, broken and, and there's a hardware amount. And if you want to do twenty-five, we'll get started at twenty-five, maybe it goes over that, then I'll come back. But we have got to get started, or we cannot perform basic services for our city. This is very important.
Okay, this is, this is the thing. And I, I, I appreciate your speech, I do. But man, when, when you feel, realize this, Ms. Crockett is asking a basic question. Mr. Val is typing the ordinance for thirty-seven thousand dollars. Only Ms. Crockett got, she had two pieces of papers, it says twenty-two and twenty-four. So where's the extra money coming from? You went all the way around the sun and the moon. All the, all the Ms. Crockett, not the one, but Ms. Crockett asked was, which one should we use? And you knew that we was having a meeting tonight, just like at one thirteen when this, th, th, this stuff was sent out to us. You could've got on the phones, hey, Ms. Crockett asked for updated estimate, estimate has changed. Uh, well, we understand inflation has went up, right, but wait a minute, before you get to jumping and, and get the clapping and going on, uh, uh, we, uh, she was asking for, is just have the price change so we can better help you, so not better help you, but help our community. Uh, that's the thing that gets me, stop doing that with these low speeches. If it's gonna be twenty-four thousand, you should've said, hey, we can do the twenty-four, wait a minute. We need the twenty-four thousand dollars. That's what, that's what the twenty-two or twenty-four, we can go with the twenty-two thousand dollars as because the lowest bid, not twenty-four, twenty-two. If that wasn't enough, you could've called an emergency meeting. And say, hey, look, we, it's an emergency, this is what we have, can we do this? That could be it. You hot it down that we had since November. Life happens, things have happened. People a, around this table have been sick, people around this table have lost loved ones, and so many people have been out of the country. So, that being said, you could've called an emergency meeting. We, we, we were meeting once a week, once a week, this body, these same people around this table, men, once a week to handle the bids of the other city. We have no problem with meeting once a week, twice a week, whatever we need to meet, we could do that. So, please, sir, Ms. Crockett just said the bids are twenty-two and twenty-four. We can go with the twenty-two thousand dollar bid, and we can go from there. Because that's simple. We could go, if the bodies, I'm fine with the twenty-two thousand, we can go with it, don't try to put the bodies on blast or we support it. I'm saying, if the body agrees to it, we can go with the twenty-two thousand dollar bid. And if you're, if you're good at what you do, at being a man like you say you are, you will call VC five hundred, VC two M, or VC nineteen and ask it. Can we, I mean, is this enough? If not, you can call another meeting Thursday or Friday and say, hey, uh, sit, sit, have this happen, sit down, and you know, can we meet to resolve this issue? That's it. When you, when, when, about this budget, you always send this budget out like hotcakes. Every day you was getting something about this budget, because that's something you wanted. And you're the CEO of this city, your responsibility shouldn't be said, hey, council members, this is what we need to do. Th, this changed, that changed. You don't tell us nothing until it's something that you want, or you wanna make the body look sad. Or you and Mrs. Columbia can get together, y'all private meetings, and say, hey, we're gonna do this and get together. Shut up, I didn't ask you to talk, I didn't ask you to talk, I'm not first.
My, Mr. Franklin. Now, the latest estimates I have, we've asked for from VC Three. Now, we have serious issues for the city. This has been for the city since November. Nobody asked for another updated one, I can tell you that as soon as, uh, y'all approve a motion to buy something, we'll ask for another updated one. Right now, the most, the highest one is thirty-eight, and the I'm sorry, twenty-eight, and the service fee is the same for both.
The service fee is included in that price, the twenty-eight, Mayor, you're not looking at this.
So, if you, if you wanna go with twenty-five plus the service fee, that's fine, that'll get us started. Plus the service fee.
We don't see a service fee.
All I can say is I, all the speeches, you know, you criticize me for making speeches, this is mostly, mostly a political discussion or argument. Meanwhile, our city needs us to act on servers so that we can operate the city, basic services. We've been trying to resolve this since November. The bottom line is, we have to resolve it. What do you want to do? What is, what is the will of the
Let me ask you quick.
I haven't recognized you. No, no, I'm, I'm trying to have a civilized discussion about, about a serious problem where we don't interrupt each other, where we don't talk over each other, where we don't accuse people of things. The bottom line is, we have not made a decision. Are we gonna make a decision, Mr. Valley is, is laboriously working away? Over here, what, what do you wanna do? That's the question for the time.
Here, here's, here's two things, y'all going back and forth, and we all are commuting on each other's jobs. I'm trying to find, but, it's the mayor's, uh, regardless of what, what, what the council feels, the mayor's job to select which one. Uh, when, when it be it, it's the mayor's job exclusively to make the contract. The only question for the council is, how much are you authorized? And so, the mayor, you need to tell them which one that you want, and council on each side, whether you're authorized. That mean, that's, that's the end of discussion should be. And that's, I mean, that, that's, that's what you're, you're going back and forth about the same thing. I think all of y'all agree you need a server.
Uh, yeah, I agree to that, but let me ask you this question. So, my thing is, I'm, and, 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 and I'm not trying to do his job. He's not explaining his job, you just made it sound a whole lot better than he has all night. But, my thing is, I'm just asking him, if he has these same two papers that I have, page four of seventeen and page eight of seventeen, and I just need him to look at what it's saying, cause he's, he's not asking for what's on these papers. That's all I'm saying.
I, I understand that discussion.
It's been established that this, what's on this paper is no longer relevant because it's expired. Is that not true? Established it earlier, that it's no longer relevant. It's no longer relevant. And, and this is not a trial, this is not a hearing, it's a city council meeting. And the, the answer to Mr. Valley's question is, thirty thousand for hardware plus the thirty-four hundred for service fee is, should be enough. If it's not, I will obviously not do it. If it's, regardless of what it turns out to be, I'll make sure that the hardware and the breakdown of the service fee is brought here in two, in two weeks, or emailed tomorrow, forget it tomorrow, and of course, we'll get an updated price. Uh, proposal with that right cut. I, I'm just gonna ask you one, I'm gonna ask you a, I'm gonna answer your question with a question. Why can't you just make a decision? We've been talking about this since November.
Why couldn't you have done something?
That is several times, and several times, we have not made a decision. It's, it's right there in front of you. To us to go, we had, we had a breakdown for
It was the same thing right here, it said, just
But we didn't have, but you will have a trial and a hearing, and you won't have a political debate. The only thing that matters is, will district court work in a couple of weeks? And are y'all for that, or are you against it? And, and what, and as Mr. Valley said, what of, of, of that amount are you willing to approve? And if you are, make a motion and a second and vote, because we have other things to discuss, but it's very, uh, Mr. Valley.
My, my practical question for both of y'all, cause you all are, y'all both have made your own points, they've been asking, they've been answering. Uh, if we ran a court of law, uh, the issue that I have is simply this. I think the mayor is operating out of a balance of caution to make sure he has enough money. I think the council is trying to, to, to serve you, Mayor, why eight thousand dollar jump? It seems to me that you all need to get something done because there's an immediate need. With thirty thousand, you can't approve it. If you approve twenty-five thousand dollars, then the mayor would have to come back and get the other portion from you all. I think he's trying to avoid having to do that as a practical matter. But I think that discussing y'all have it. The question is, what is he gonna say to get this done? So I can finish this ordinance, and we can move on to the next issue. I mean, just, I think y'all are agreeing that y'all need. So I can finish this ordinance and we can move on to the next issue. I mean, just, I think y'all are agreeing that y'all need.
That makes sense.
Well said, I can't really add anything to it. So what is the will of the body? And we need to get this guys to Mr. Valley, because Mr. Valley is actually typing it up as we speak.
I'm making a motion that we follow the advice of, of attorney. Put a cap on it of a total cap of thirty-four thousand dollars. So the whole wall of wax, and if it goes over that, then the mayor will have to come back to us if it's less than he spends less. Up to but not to exceed thirty-four thousand dollars.
Let me make this simple for y'all, cuz y'all, y'all have been around about the main thing. Mayor, which one are you particularly asking the council to approve? Is it the, is it particular, are they all of them designed the same?
There are, there are two separate types of servers. Two types of servers, uh, they're both Dell, one comes from one major CRW, and the other one comes directly from Dell. I think the direct Dell is cheaper quote, but we need to update it, price changes every day. And it could change. I really, the answer to that question is, I just wanna make, and of course, you get a discount based on how much you buy at the same time. If you do it incrementally, you don't get as good a deal, so that can make the price go up. The reason that uh five thousand dollars is, is, can be a very low amount these days to run a city on it. Operate day-to-day operations is because things lower up. It's not a whole lot of money like it was when that was originally approved. The reason the state has said it's thirty thousand, I think now, or whatever it is, is because of this sort of thing. You get economies of scale. So the answer to your question is, I think we can, according to VC three. We could get there somewhere between the twenty and thirty thousand mark on hardware and installation costs. And if it's anything beyond, above that, I'm more than happy to come back and ask for the remainder of that. And if it's anything, uh, and whatever it is below that, I will make sure and submit that to the council and to the public. Both email and in meeting, uh, in the next meeting, to show how it actually broke out as well and the, and the most. But if it's other thing, I won't do it, we'll have to have another meeting.
Well, the answer, what's the amount? Well, let me, let me make myself clear, cuz my question may not have been as intelligible. Uh, the, the question that, that, that I'm trying to get to is this, there are many moving factors in you making this selection. You're the chief executive officer. Uh, is it faster to get it from one place or versus the other? Which one can service you quicker and is that part of your decision, why you choosing it and those things? Cuz, cuz this is an emergency and all those things, per factor, who can get here, what is job done, how fast to get it done?
I don't know the answer until, and they don't either, until we order it, because the supply chain changes on a daily basis. They ship out and bring in on a daily basis. So they don't know what's gonna be in the warehouse or not tomorrow, because they've got it in what went out today, based on who bought them today. If Blaber bought some stuff today, and we didn't, they're not gonna be there. So the answer is, we don't know. And, and the short, the short answer to your question is, whichever one's gonna get here first. That's the answer, and it might be the higher estimate, it might not be. But we need to be prepared for that so we can get district court and everybody else up and running again.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking that just for the benefit of the mayor, the council, and the public. Because we usually in a, these competitive, they're gonna say, we were wanting to this vendor. But what the mayor is saying is, like, he's not trying to do it to a particular vendor, because of the fluidity of the situation is what he's saying. I don't know if he doesn't know which one is gonna be available, so that's why he's asking for a particular amount. And this is, this is not a static situation where he knows, this, this is, uh, this is what it is. And so, uh, hopefully that helps you all more. I don't know if I confuse you or what, but I'm saying the situation is constantly changing according to what he's saying.
He said exactly right. He's sure he's making a recommendation, uh, Mr. Attorney, that, uh, we were gonna cap bid on it and let him go ahead and get it done.
I, I said that y'all, 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 y'all have chewed this sauce and done everything else, I ain't telling you how to make it, but I need it made. Whatever the amount is, it's the same what it is.
Have to do it.
Right.
So I make a motion that we, uh, give him up to, uh, thirty-four thousand, is that what you're saying, Attorney?
I'm saying whatever dollars, I'm not saying a dollar, you're only saying a dollar. What I'm saying is this, I'm halfway done with the ordinance. That makes a good motion, to what ordinance is this, this number one or two? Then we're ordered to, to waive compared, to order this to suspend and replace ordinance number two, two thousand two, on its third and final reading. Uh, read the title only, uh, and, and this is an ordinance to waive compared to being waiting to a server to be purchased. For the Phillips County District Court.
Right.
In the amount of.
Up to, up to, but not to.
Had a motion in the table, he was trying to initiate it according to Mr. Valley's actions. Just be patient, Mr. St. Columbia, would you finish your motion? Mr. St. Columbia, had the motion.
Finish up, Mr. Attorney, cuz we were talking about the motion.
Your motion would be up to thirty-four thousand, including project costs.
That's the motion I made. The bottom line numbers come out there.
It would be thirty-four thousand with the mayor. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's include the, the, the hardware, thirty thousand, and the project fee up to four thousand, was total of thirty-four thousand.
Not to exceed that amount.
Right. Now, the way I'm writing the ordinance, just for you all. I'm gonna include just general language of up to thirty-four thousand, inclusive of the hardware and the project fee. Because today, the private fee may be more if things.
Well, you know it's not gonna be twenty-two, cuz that's what they.
Thirty-six hundred ninety-six dollars. So, but it could be slightly more, I don't know.
It could be slightly more.
But your motion is up to thirty-four thousand. Mr. St. Columbia raised, uh, approval. To waive, uh, to, to place ordinance number two, two thousand two, on its third and final read, and reading the title only. Which authorized the waiver of kind of being related to the purchase of a server. An amount up to thirty-four thousand inclusive of the hardware and the project fee.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Yes, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion to ask for lack of a second, Mr. Franklin. You were trying to make a motion earlier, but you, Mr. St. Columbia was recognized, and now you're recognized. If you still wanna be. Anybody else?
Yes. Our bid is twenty-two thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and eleven cents, if we adjusted seven point five percent for inflation. That's another sixteen hundred dollars, which is twenty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty, let's call it twenty-four, make it even. Uh, I would suggest that I would move that we approve that amount, uh, to be purchased on a server.
Mr. Every moves that we.
Okay, Mr. Attorney's motion is to place ordinance number two, two thousand two, on a third of our read, reading the title only. Only, uh, and authorizing the mayor to purchase a server in an amount up to twenty-four thousand dollars. Including the hardware and the project fee.
All right, pardon motion, is there a second? Support St.'s motion, uh, any discussion requests about the motion?
St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Franklin?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Being a motion to adopt.
Asked at that same time, who was Crockett, who was Doc. Word is number two, Mr. St. Columbia's second submission for file adoption. Any questions or comments, this is on the twenty-four thousand dollar, uh, cap on software. Including IT services to install, I'm sorry, hardware, install the hardware. Any questions or comments, I'm not calling.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Davis? Crockett? Franklin? St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Six years.
So the next time I'm agenda.
What's next? I'm trying to see. Now, all this status of IT lawsuit, my understanding. I don't think all of it's turning here at last, when I met with the mayor and Mr. Turner about it, the lawsuit. We had already reserved for Cresta Creek Solutions. And his attorney has sent a letter to us, terminated the contract. We'd already set that aside, I think that's been paid. But, and so I think that concludes the lawsuit, I don't know, uh, I hadn't got any other, I haven't received any other order on it. But I think that we submitted that when the order was done, uh, late last year, well, I think it was August or so last year.
Yeah, I think it's mostly been, I don't know what it's called, but their final revisions, the final reviews, the sign-offs and all that. And this, the original, the last thing was, uh, the payment of what we had set aside and tried to pay. Uh, at the time, but he didn't accept it, and so we put that in escrow basically, putting the outcome of the lawsuit. And, uh, the judge awarded him, and sent us a favor, but, um, uh, but the attorney. And CCC changed their mind, and said they would take the money, that's how I remember it. So we agreed to give him the money, we already had it set aside anyway for the, the, um, actual work. But the judge ruled that he had actually terminated the contract, so the rest of the question was irrelevant anyway.
Right. If I may skip to the, the, the premium pay lawsuit, yeah. Premium pay lawsuit, I ta- I've been talking to, as well, my brother James, that is, sued the city. And, uh, the status of lawsuit, their negotiation, they were talking to him right before we came to council meeting. They were, he had said text messages, they were trying to call him back. They're working on something to try to get it resolved, uh, what they wanna do is talk to me and the mayor. Cuz here's the thing, this is a big, open, public discussion, every time we have a meeting, it has to be in public. If they want to make an offer to resolve it, they don't wanna do it twice. So they wanna talk to me and the mayor to see what's, what the mayor would have sent to in terms of a possible settlement response to settlement offer. Because we may go through discussion once, and the mayor vetoed, and he had to come back again if it's not something that the mayor is on board with. And they represent everyone, they're trying to reach something that's mutual if they can. But if they cannot reach something that's mutual, then they, uh, cannot. And in that vein, I was intending to get with you, but we walked in the building, but we didn't talk, cuz I just hung up with them at five fifty-five. And they wanna see if you're available at eleven thirty, Thursday, to talk. But if you're not, we'll do a different day. But I would just action it now. But, but they asked specifically, was to put it on the March first meeting. Uh, so they can address at the very beginning of the meeting on March first. But, uh, Mr. Valley has made another offer today. I don't know what the offer included, they didn't share it with me, they said they're gonna email it to me once they get it. Once they type a letter, and so I was waiting to hear back from them. Uh, we have an attorney, they had a firm outside of Mississippi to represent him from Norfolk, Arkansas. And the Mississippi League is also involved in it. But it caused involved my brother, they're doing most of this talking and then communicating to me what I need to communicate with you all. Not me slowing in the process down, it's just, I'm going through two or three people.
Okay, uh, questions from Mr. Valley on that?
Now, the lawsuit, one thing I'm gonna say, the lawsuit only involves the people that's in the lawsuit. Involves no one else at this, at this point. And so, that's one of the issues, is settlement. They don't wanna do this two or three times, too, and so that's why they want to talk to the mayor and the council. Cuz the only people named in lawsuits are the only one involved in the lawsuit. The only people that's before the court are the people that's in the lawsuit, the named people that's in the lawsuit. The John and Jane those that's in the lawsuit. And so right now, the only thought that they would have a settlement was with the people that's in the lawsuit. But in the effort to try to prevent further lawsuits, if there is a settlement, they may say. Is it acceptable, mayor, council, for us to resolve it with every potential person, if you get what I'm saying? You can't give them a look from court if you're not before the court. Get relief from the court if you're not before the court, in other words, if you're not in lawsuit, lawsuit doesn't affect you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valley. I'm gonna, since we skipped over, I'm gonna do, uh, this'll be easy, and then we'll go to water and sewer. Spend, spend some time on that. The animal control, uh, Miss Ford and others asked for a little bit more of a breakdown on a plan. I'm gonna take any questions or discuss it tonight, because let me, let me finish this, Franklin. Uh, mainly because I wasn't able to get this to you until the meeting. And I want you to have a chance to look at what, what's included in the attachments, your email, the existing animal control laws. For the city and some for the state, or the states for the state, it was too long to cover this up. I did, we did copy a couple of relevant processes of the statute, but I would encourage you to go and look at the entire animal control statute. But for the state, but you don't have the entire, uh, to my knowledge, the entire local ordinances. On animal control, plus this coverer, and, um. So I, again, don't want to discuss or take questions tonight, because we just got this passed out tonight. But you have it two weeks ahead of time, the glad to answer questions between now and the next meeting, or get additional information. Alright, so now we're gonna move up to water and sewer, um, and I'm going to go ahead and, and ask, uh, Mr. Patterson. And Miss, uh, Raven Wesley come forward, um, we don't really have a table, so. Well, we got somebody to sit down here by Ms. Crockett, and then somebody can sit down here by Miss Ford, if she wanted to do that. But now you do need to speak in tw- in front of a microphone, so that, so that the people. You're gonna have to speak into a microphone, or? Sure, pull that up to you. Make sure you pull that up pretty close. But Mr. Patterson is a, imagine, I'm gonna introduce him. Mr. Patterson, and now let you go, take it from, from there as far as. So check, check it right here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Me and Miss Wesley are here tonight to talk to the city council about. We don't have the proper funds. See, certain bills. Can't get certain accounts because they're with us. Members should support us because we have a budget. Stay. So tonight to you guys.
It's a question.
You're not recognized. Well, just, just tie it on this for. Do you want to introduce this? Cause the, the presentation hasn't been done. Then we'll take questions. You want Ms. Wesley to speak? I was like, I'm gonna let you introduce Ms. Wesley.
Okay. At this, at this time, the office manager of the water company can tell you a little bit better than I can.
Yes.
Ms. Wesley.
Ms. Wesley, you recognize. And then we'll take questions in.
I want to talk because I've been talking to Mr. Jeff Patterson. I've talked to some other people about the finances of the water company. I'm struggling to pay our bills every month. I'm struggling to do payroll. The payroll taxes, I'm struggling to pay I R S, the local vendors. And they're beginning to stop lending us by supplies because we are behind. So I've, I've been talking to the general manager. And I've been talking to some other council members, but then I met with the mayor. He gave me permission to come before the council. And that's why I'm here tonight. I am really struggling and having a hard time to meet our bills. Probably had to be dashed them back in Jan- February of twenty-one. Our expenses exceeded our income. Never regained the finances that I needed to pay our regular utilities every month.
So are you? Mr. Franklin?
Ms. Wesley, how you doing tonight?
I'm fine.
Now, you said in twenty-one, before this storm came, you were able to pay your bills, right?
Yes, sir.
Before we had the, with the water crisis, right? And the council declared an emergency, right? Who, who was spending your money? Cause if you had a necessary flow, you, at the, at the crisis only came, you'd be alright, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is my thing. Do you know how much money y'all spent when we had that, that, that emergency?
Sir.
So.
Today I'm done.
So is it fair to say that it's been so much money that the, the mayor, cause he was in, he was in charge of calling that emergency, right? He declared it was emergency, so he could, so it took us out of the loop of what he was spending, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. So would you be fair to say that, 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 does the water company have a side by side? ATV, a side by side? And the emergency, it was clear that the water department bought it side by side. A four-wheeler, when you said it, would be. So would be fair to say we also paid Mr. Jack Ross. Cause I don't know the body of numbers, but I remember we paid Jack Ross. Was it eight, six thousand dollars? We also paid Jack Ross. Oh, no. Can we go pay Jack Ross twice? No, same as was. Seven thousand dollars. We also paid Big Ed, Big Ed Tony or Big Ed, Danny Brinkley's twice, fifteen, fifteen thirty-eight eighty-eight. So we don't have all what the mayor spent. Because before this disaster happened, you were able to pay your bills, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. So there's a, there's a lot of things that the mayor has spent that you all don't know, right? That, that, as the office, you would know, right?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Right. So it would be fair that the mayor bought a side by side, let's say a side by side and a four-wheeler. When, when he had his disaster, right?
It was a side by side.
It's a four-wheeler too. It's two, it's two of them. So is there stuff in the water department right now?
No.
Okay, so that's what I've been trying to say. See, this is the thing that got the water problem in trouble. You, 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 you didn't, did you want a side by side, Ms. Wesley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you, Mr. Patterson? So that's the thing I've been trying to tell you all, that the mayor spends stuff. Wait, hold on, wait, wait, wait. Your water bills, Ms. Wesley? Do you, when people? Who, who asked you all to make arrangements on people's water bills? Does the mayor say, hey, we're gonna do payment arrangements on these water bills? Or do you also have, you're gonna do arrangements? Because it was an email, so that we, we stopped letting people go pay, like, I see we got this pan due amount, we'll pay you a amount of forty-one thousand dollars. I see another pan due amount. A hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I see another pan due amount. What is that? Bills? This is sixty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. See, are these bills that are due when people allowed to make payment arrangements? I thought, uh, Mr. Turn, let me. Can, can the mayor get people payment arrangements on water bills? We have some, some people go to court about that, water bill, abuse of power or something.
You and Mr. Huff went to court regarding abuse of power.
Okay.
Now, the abuse of power statute has to do with any person, everybody has to be treated, they can't be in a special favor for anyone. That will include not paying the bills and so forth. We have to be consistent in what to do. I believe your specific allegation was relating to went to water bill that, 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 that you either didn't pay or given an extension off.
But so this is the same thing I have in my head, right? Is that? This is some, they said past due bills. We got some Jerry's six. We got some from, oh, months ago.
Those are past due bills that are unpaid and people have given extensions. That's what you were charged with.
So, 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 uh, by that being said, so who's gonna be having the kind of fees right here? So who's gonna be having the kind of fees right here?
I don't know, Mr. Franklin. I don't know. But what happened specifically, and I, and I'm not trying to cast this person on you. But specifically, before anything happened, there has to be affidavit done by someone.
Oh, okay.
And previously, in, in the previous case, and I, I, I don't want to bring that back up, but just for a practical understanding, everybody listening. That was affidavit by, done by the then police chief relating to two city council members. And then when they did that, that was processed through and a warrant was done for those two council members.
So, so.
The statute says for anybody in, in, that's an officer of the city that would include anybody in the water department, anybody in city administration. Anyone, mayor, any, any, anyone.
So, so this issue, who would handle this issue? Who do we need to turn this over to, somebody who has this issue? Because clearly.
As it relates to an affidavit, any, any citizen can do affidavit when they believe that a crime has been committed.
So, so who?
And the affidavit is done and processed and sent to the city attorney's office and sent to the, to just.
So, 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 so.
If there's a, if there's a in a justice term of whether probable cause and probable cause is simply, well, there's enough information to believe that a crime may have been committed. That doesn't mean the person is guilty, but it just means that there's enough evidence to bring it to us, because there may have been a crime committed. That's, that's what probable cause in layman's terms is.
So, Ms. Wesley, you, you, you are never authorized nobody to get a payment, right, extension, right?
I'm sorry.
So this, this has nothing to do with you and Mr. Patterson, right?
Yeah, they.
So the extensions that these people got, this had nothing to do with you, all right?
We do give some extensions. We give extensions once, I give extensions once a year. If someone is struggling, having a hard time. I, I put them in the system, but I keep an update of anyone that I give an extension to. And they're on this. And if they give an extension in January, they're not eligible for another extension until January of the next year.
Can I answer this question, Ms. Wesley?
Yes, sir.
Have there been, has anybody made, cause I see the, the water department has lost a bit due to a lot of adjustments. There's been a lot of adjustments done to, to people when COVID first happened. I, I've gotten some emails where there was adjustments done. Major adjustments by people. Not you all, but there were, you know, premier made some adjustments to some of those bills. And that, has that happened?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then we talk about those adjustments because, and then you had to.
You just said, yes, I just. Now, listen, I don't, this. So will my sure understand what you just said.
Okay.
And during the pandemic, there was an emergency, state declared and city declared. And the utility company, if you recall, adopted a policy of not sending people's wire off and working with them on their bills. And as utilities did it, Entergy did it, Center Point did it. And so forth. And we did it for a limited period of time. And then we stopped doing that and we merged for remercy. We haven't done that for, before the emergency was over. So what I think, well, I, I can't speak to Mr. Franklin, but it sounded to me like he was asking a question. Are we in a hole because we're making adjustments? And the question is, are we in a hole financially because we were making adjustments?
Yes.
That's your question.
I, I can answer my question.
You asked, I asked the question, uh, Ms. Weber. And I'm asking her if that, she said, yes, is that the answer? We're in a hole financially because we made adjustments during pandemic because of other adjustments that we made, whether it's me or anybody else for that matter.
I, I wasn't saying that. What I'm saying is we did make adjustments on people account. But we're in a hole because of the obligations we had for the last year. Now, we have given adjustments. I don't say that that caused us to be in a hole to where we are now.
I'm still, Ms. Valerie, Ms. Valerie, I'm sorry, Ms. Valerie.
If I may, you're talking, you're talking about very different adjustments. There are different adjustments that have been authorized in a policy for years. I think that one adjustment is a policy. If you have a leak. Right, well known, if you have a leak.
Right.
Then, then they go back and adjust after you get the leak. With the statement from the plumber that's been fixed or something like that. So there are some adjustments that's authorized by the council. I think what you're getting is which is definitely authorized, which one was not authorized for clarity of the record. Because not all adjustments are non-authorized adjustments. I just wanted to make that point before you all go through with it.
Yes. And that problem is Franklin, that was, Mr. Franklin. I think. To talk over, but by Mr. Franklin, Mr. St. Columbia was next and then, Mr. Franklin.
My question was, those adjustments made, were they somewhat insignificant to the total amount of debt that we owe?
I'm not understanding your question. I'm not understanding your question.
The amount, the amount of, of those adjustments. Were they a small amount compared to the total massive amount of bills?
Of course.
That was a question.
Yeah.
It's not really, it's really not that important as to the amount of the total bills that show. So it's the income that the city has for the water of manufacturing, the water cost, that, that is excessive to the amount of money that we're taking in.
You understand what I'm asking?
The money that we collect from customers paying their bills. We take this money and we make deposits to the bank. That we get, that she has to pay every month, is coming out of this month. And it's not enough.
That's what I'm trying to get to, the rate that we're charging for water. You feel is still insignificant. So if we, if we had a higher income for charging for the water, you'd have the money.
Awesome.
No. Hold on, let's stop this thing. Forgot my, I wanna, I wanna try to stay on topic here. And the bottom line was, we need to pursue very much needed customer service positions. And we need to fill those positions, but at the same time, we had issues with payroll and taxes. And so I asked, I'm sorry, but if, if she would go to jail and if if she wanted to, she had my authority, she, I mean, not my authority, my approval, my permission. As long as Mr. Jeff approved to come before the council and discuss it openly. Because it's an important problem. We've gone off on some other issues and that's, that's certainly the right as a city councilwoman, Mr. Franklin. But the issue is the solvency of the water department. The amount of the bills, most of the bills are owed are very significant bills. Most of them are to the city for, I believe it's for sanitation fees that we have to pay, that we aren't paying to the city. We owe a lot of significant bills. The adjustment issue, I think, is a pretty insignificant. I can't think of more than five cases in any investment I've ever been part of. In the time I've even been here, and that's because I was asked to be. So I, I think it's a peripheral issue, but Mr. Franklin, you're unless you're voting, you certainly can ask first Mr. Ms. Crockett after that, if she still wants to be recognized and win, Mr. Valley.
This is what I got. You know, I, 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 when, when, when I had the Florida first time, let me say this. These folks would be in debt. They would not have been in debt. They owe, they, they owe, they owe Miss Ramsey, they owe. They're in debt because the decisions you made. When you, and when you declared an emergency, you spent payroll. She can't even tell us how much money you spent. And I'm not giving a dime until I find out how much money he spent during that disaster. What put y'all in a hole? You weren't in a hole before, were you? When it had this disaster, and then when you got in a hole?
Yes.
Cause you don't even know how much we spent, do you? You don't know about no side by side, you don't know about no, no four-wheeler, you don't know about none of this stuff. So why are we talking about, I would like to help you, but I will not help you until I know how much money this body asked. How much money did you spend when you, when you called a, a, an emergency? We don't know. So I cannot give a dime. I hate to struggle. I do, but it's not no fault of your own because you, you've been managing up until this point, right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
When you had a disaster, you lost accountable. How much money you had? Cause he had a blank check to spend whatever he wanted to spend. Now, I'm sorry that you're in the shape that you in. No fault of your own. The mayor was the CEO and still is. He made, he bought four-wheelers and side by side. They chewed, even though that you bought, right? So why, do you understand where I'm coming from? I will not help until I know where every dime went. So we can give these citizens an account of where they money went. I know you need help. But before, before he had to meet with you all, like he does, he should have said, hey, I'm gonna show the council, we haven't got a report yet on what you spent. And during the disaster, if you made any adjustments to anybody's water bill, it should have came before this body. Because we cannot get that loss revenue back that you adjusted.
Right, Mr. Franklin. I didn't adjust only by, I wasn't.
You said due to the pandemic. Did he, did he not say energy? Center Point, all these folks made adjustments. Am I right, city attorney?
Not in, not in the case of the mercy. And Ms. Weber has already testified. You said it was because of the mercy, water mercy that happened after that. Mr. Franklin, if you're gonna make wild accusations of this purpose.
We don't, you just try to.
Answer the question.
I, who can answer the question? You don't want to answer, you don't want to spend the money. You got a side by side and a four-wheeler. She's wondering what she got. You spent the money. You spent, you go crazy with the money. And now you owe these. Ms. Crockett, the reaction for how much money we spent in this disaster. And you sit there, you couldn't tell us, that's why Ms. Wesley can't pay her bills. And I'm, Ms. Wesley, I care about the water, so I do. But I'm not moving until I get how much money you all spent. And, cause you don't know, he spent the money, we paid Jack Ross. And what got done, we paid Ed, Ed Ben Brinkley's down there. We bought a side by side and a four-wheeler. They chewed, didn't even know we bought. Because when we gave, when we declared an emergency, he had a blank check to do whatever he wanted to do. We said, we went to the patio to sing, uh, Precious Lord. It ain't working today. That's just what he should have thought about Precious Lord. When he went bought them side by side and four-wheelers, and y'all didn't know about. And we still got.
But she doesn't know, didn't know about. This was a water emergency.
This woman.
Mr. Franklin, the water emergency that happened in the war. We came a few minutes of losing water from the entire city and that was a big emergency. You're saying. You're saying, and Miss Rob is saying, because of that crisis, which Jackson went without water, Memphis went without water. Cities all over the south and the mid-south went without water during that emergency, Helena did not. And the reason it did not is because we made some very good decisions, but yes, it was expensive. So you're saying because we had the same return emergency everyone was seeing had, it was more expensive? Of course it was. Now we're trying, now, now we're trying to pay those bills because we had an emergency. I don't control the weather. Because the weather happened, the weather happened.
The weather, it didn't even call it, we had an emergency, and this happened.
Franklin, you weren't even there, you didn't even turn up.
Yes, I was, I was, I was missing. The next night, you found, after Benji was talking about, because Ms. Crockett kept asking about a certain issue, about some, we had.
You got the wrong emergency.
We had a.
Franklin, you just framed him now, stop.
We had a pump that went out, Ms. Crockett kept asking about this pump, and Benji was telling me, he didn't know how much money y'all spent then.
Mr. Franklin, we got the wrong crisis, the wrong emergency. Mr. Franklin, how long have you been on this to the council?
Long, long.
How long? How long? How long?
Because you spent this money, and now these folks come and get you out of there because yo, the mayor of Helena West Helena has spent a whole lot of money. And that.
You just said, you just said.
And Rena Wester up for failure because you spent they money, and now you want them to come here, but I told you, I'm not giving a dime. Because you spent this money unlisted. What, what, what you mean is side by side for, in the water department? Just like you bought that.
For the soaps.
F three fifty with that CARES Act money, and it's supposed to be in y'all's department, and where was it at? Where was that F three fifty? Over this, over there.
Yes, sir, I was.
This body voted to buy a F three fifty, Ms. Ramsey and my career, did we buy F three fifty? You getting upset because you didn't buy a F three fifty with that CARES Act money, and it's supposed to be at the, at the water department, Ms. Ramsey. When we bought the. You know you bought.
Franklin, I, I keep, three fifty is being used every single day.
It's probably ninety percent in the water department, is that right, Ms. Ramsey? You don't know about the talk, cause I got.
Mr. Franklin, we're not talking about the F three fifty, we're talking about the finances of the water.
Shows the way you spend money there.
Mr. Franklin, I'm gonna ask you to stop talking, we're meeting.
Because you wrong, and you can't, you can't.
Mr. Franklin.
You have spent money.
Stop.
With all that, cause you spent money, now you embarrassed, then you go, go tell your Facebook.
Ms. Crockett, you still want to be recognized?
You, you still have no business spending.
You still want to be recognized?
I'm back.
Mr. Franklin, I, I got a couple questions, I got a couple. Mr. Val is next, and then Mr. Evelyn.
I hear Mr. Evelyn not coming back. No, no, let me say this before you. The simple, the simple thing about this, this, this whole process. I don't know, I haven't seen a financial report from the water department, how we got there. I do have a letter from Miss Wesley, expressing a dire situation in the water department. Two things I want to say, City Attorney. Water department is a public utility, it cannot run a deficit. As the city, we cannot run a deficit. The situation needs to be fixed. I know people pointing fingers at each other. I understand history and so, but that needs to be a complete study of what happened, how we go forward for. To, the only way, it's two options to do it. The city can give the water department some money, one. Two, you can look at a great study and do, do another increase of the citizens' finances. I mean, those are your two options. Unless you're gonna do a, a third option would be a revenue bond relating to it. And so, I don't know what the finances are, how they got in this position. I hear the mayor, I hear Mr. Franklin, I do know that one, one of the emergencies was authorized according, it was within the government's timeframe. Only person to declare, declare emergency is the governor, and the city council and the mayor can declare one, when the mayor can declare one, when the governor already has an existing emergency. Uh, the, and those can last for hundred twenty days. During that hundred twenty day time period, the mayor can waive any ordinance he wants to and spend money how he wants to, to, to that particular emergency. Uh, at the end of the day though, he still can't engage in deficit spending and, and et cetera, and I'm not saying that he has. Uh, but the thing about it is, uh, the mayor declared three emergencies. Uh, I know that one was covered by, by the governor's emergency. I don't know if the other two were not, I have to go back and look at it. And I'm not kind of tasking surprises on the mayor, I'm just saying, I don't recall at this point, and I'm sitting right here. Uh, but, uh, the situation is dire, what it sounds like, and it needs the attention of, of everybody at this table. Because city can't have deficit spending, and your utility, the water utility, not only is supposed to be able to function and pay its bills. That's supposed to be reserved to make sure for disasters. Now, as it relates to, no mayor has had adequate reserves. And that is an issue that, that is, that has to be addressed. We finally did get the water rate increase, and it's tied to the consumer price index, and went up again, uh, in January. But I think there has to be a serious look at the water department regardless of what happened. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just stating what, what the law says.
Mr. Trevor.
Ms. Wesley, how long has the water department been struggling to pay its bills?
I wrote a letter to Mr. Jeff Patterson, and it's in here in the letter. On May the sixth, twenty twenty one, is when I really started getting worried about the bills. And he told me he thought it was getting better because we didn't have all of the, um, the problems that we had at the beginning of the year. So May the sixth is when I really started getting concerned with twenty twenty one.
And is Mr. Patterson the person who communicates with the, with the mayor's office, or is it you?
Patterson, I, I was, did the chain of command, I went to him, and he said that he would talk to the mayor.
So is it your understanding that these, uh, financial problems have been communicated to the mayor's office since as far back as May of twenty twenty one?
Yes, sir.
I believe, but I just, why were we not giving this presentation when we were working on? I, I don't, I don't understand that part. I mean.
Well, I, I can answer that question. Mr. Patterson, rest assured, from the budget discussion, and we did talk about it. And what happened has changed since then, is, um, we had two openings, and we had a discussion with our warranty people. And Miss Wesley and I had, had a detailed discussion about our ability to pay our payroll taxes. And I explained to Miss Wesley that we need to get the council involved and like, make sure they, and she asked me, can I? She, I said, you need to tell the council, and she said, is it okay? Do I have your permission? I said, yes, as long as Mr. Patterson's, if I wrote it. So there's nothing, uh, everything about all of this is transparent. And, uh, of course, it's also audited every year. We've had a lot of crises in the water department. Because it's taken so long to get our water department financially where it should be from a rightful view. But we have a cash flow problem because of the emergencies. They literally went without water in West Helena. We were about to go out without water in Helena. Mr. Patterson, if I won't see him back there, still there, um, I think can tell you he's there on, we were there arm to arm, and every, most everyone had him at some point or another. He'll tell you that when you call Mr. Rocket, for example, in Clarstale, who has saved us numerous times. You don't want to have to worry about whether we paid him or not, uh, because we do, we have a mortgage because our infrastructure is so old and outdated. We have over three hundred thousand dollars in an account that the federal government has just said we can use in Rescue Act money to pay our bills. We're gonna get another one point one million dollars in Rescue Act money coming this spring. That we, the federal government has now said we can use to pay for water and sewer department, including our bills as long as it's for government services. I suggest that we do that to help us in the waters and sewer department, which has been in trouble for many years. When it had to cash in CD, for I got here, when it had to cash in CDs just to make payroll. And that, so CDs were put aside years ago for infrastructure investments, but because the rates weren't increased, they had to be used for operations. So now here we are, without many CDs, and we don't have the reserves Mr. Val is talking about. And we need to build those up again, and we have money from the federal government that will help us do that. And, but we can't do that without the council's approval and permission. And so I wanted you to hear how important it is that we consider paying our bills at the water department with the Rescue Act money to get us where we ought to be. That's, that's how it happened, and that's why.
Yes, sir, and I, I, I participated in every budget meeting that we had. Most often it was me and Mrs. St. Columbia. Now, if you remember something that I don't remember, he can correct my memory. I do not remember Mr. Patterson when he came saying, we are in dire straits, we cannot pay our bills, we need help, we are desperate. I do not remember a presentation from Mr. Patterson that was along those lines and in that nature. Now, if it happens, maybe I missed, but I do not remember Mr. Patterson making the same presentation that Miss Wesley just made to us. About the financial status of our water department.
And with all due respect, it hasn't happened yet. This just happened this week or last.
She just said since May of last year.
And, and so, and in May of last year, you approved the use of one point one million dollars for the water and sewer department, and broadband. That's changed since then. Now we don't have that money in the water and sewer department because y'all voted to defund it or unfund it or unappropriate it. And, and here we are with a severe crisis. We still have some money left from that part of the money, and we have money coming. So you need to understand how serious it is. As far as Mr. Patterson goes, I can't speak for him, it was about the appropriations. And what, the conversation Miss Rob had hadn't happened yet, and we were still talking about the Rescue Act money being able to help the water department, and that's still what we're talking about tonight. So that's my response to you, is the conversation we had didn't happen yet, number one. Number two, in May of last year, y'all approved spending a lot, most of the money on water and sewer. And number three, the federal government has since said we can now spend it on pretty much any government services operation, except bonuses for elected officials. So there we are. You need to know where we are, now you do.
I, I understand, Mr. Mayor, but we were not only not told this information during the budget process. We were asked to not impose the regular increase that we approved when we approved the rate increase.
So it was, and I don't want to interrupt, but we don't, it's a bad time to have a seven percent rate increase on our water customers. It's a bad time, I would urge you again, to suspend that water rate increase, instead use the Rescue Act monies. It would be much better for the water department and our customers at a time when inflation is skyrocketed in one of the poorest cities in America. Yes, I still think we should do that.
Mr. Mayor. You have to stop the speech, and in the middle of this speech, you just cut off. He, he never got the finish where he had to say. But this is what I'm saying, I'm like, I'm gonna say this, now I'm saying this. This first letter was wrote in May, to Mr. Jeff, because he said it was gonna get better. If we bought hair and money in May, you said we approved the money in May. Why when we came back in November, ain't nothing, just why money ain't been used?
Because y'all began to talk about using other rights.
No, but I'm.
And, and the, and the, and the, 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 I'm trying to answer your question, and you're talking, the federal government, um. I'm trying to answer.
No, you're not. You're saying that the money, we approved the money in May. We didn't come to this table talking about using the money a different way until November. So from May to no, if the money was approved in May, they had these problems in May. Why did nothing happen between May and November? That's, that's my.
The answer is, we hadn't gotten a final ruling out of Washington D.C. to make sure we could use it on bills for the water and sewer department. But we were told they probably would, and they did. That's the answer. But, and they have, and you still have that option right now. We have over three hundred thousand dollars in that account, we can spend it right now to help the water department, and this way we, we'll fix bills. Right now, tonight, you have the ability and authority to do that. I do not have that authority, but you do.
I know, I ain't get no answer of why we didn't do anything. If we, okay, then why did we appropriate the money to be used for the, uh, water department if it was not gonna be used? See, this is, you, you, you tried to make this two side, let me finish, I got the floor, I got the floor, I got the floor. Uh, what's the rules, Robin rules order, I got the floor. You try to make the public think that the city council sits here and go against everything that you had. That money said, they got them, the money was here in May, April, May, we approved it to be used in the water department. Maybe if we had to use some of that money to fix some of them leaks, they'd have had some money to pay some bills. But instead of that, it just sit there, and it sit there, and it sit there, and it sit there. Then when we come to the table to talk about using it for something else, then you try to make the public think that we didn't took some money back from the water department.
Right.
That money sit there six months with no action that had been approved. It's, it's, it's so many things, it really, if you ask me, and it's just me talking, the city council almost has no purpose. Anything we approve, you disapproved it, like the, uh, the, and I'm just going into, we approved something where, um, on violent circle that the, uh, street pavement was supposed to be completed to this day. It has not been done, and the street now is two times worse than it was the day that we approved it. So it does no good for us to prove, now, if we sit here tonight, like you want us to prove that money, approve the money for that, uh, computer. When you get here in the morning, you gonna call them people and start ordering, cause that's something you want. I don't understand why you try to make it seem like that this council is so against you. I've said this once, and I'm gonna say it again, then I'm gonna leave this alone, cause it's just getting out of hand. You always make it seem like that we don't wanna work with you. But as I said before, if you have five people agreeing to something and one opposing it, who's not working with who? It, it, it's just that like you, and then you always tell us, and nobody got the floor, you get to hauling, and you don't, you don't want, you told Mr. Franklin about five times tonight, that he interrupted somebody. But at the time that he was talking, he had the floor, you cut him off, you gave the floor to Mr. Val, then to Mr. St. Columbia. But at the time that you stopped him from talking, he had the floor, but you told Mr. Val he could talk now. So it's like, anybody that go against you, and I know I'm, I'm on your list too, but it matters not to me. Because every time the paper roll out, I did something. If I sit here and object because I wanna know how you are spending the, the city's money, so be it that you put me on the front page of the paper, y'all gonna make me famous. Mr. St. Columbia, Ms. Ford, Ms. Davis, Mr. Ethel, and Mr. Franklin was elected, just like people. And believe it or not, we, we want the city to prosper, but we cannot have everything that you want, that's the only time you wanna get on board. We got lawsuits, we got everything going on that did not have to be before this city. Like I said before, if we had, when we approved that money for the water company to fix their leaks and stuff, if you'd have gave, if you'd have went on, sent it on, and let them use the money to fix their leaks. The money that they spent on fixing leaks could have been spent on paying them people their bills, and we would not be in this position. So don't make it seem like the council did anything. We did, I thought, and if you had to spit that money when we approved it in May, we wouldn't even had the discussion in November.
Okay, Ms. Crockett, you can now make a motion to spend that three hundred seventy thousand dollars. You can make a motion to, to spend that three hundred thousand dollars to still in that account, to help the water department pay those bills, you can do that right now, I will support you if you do. What would you like to do?
I want to know why is it that it has to be something that you want us to do for you to support it? Just because you want it, don't make it not be right, Mayor. Now, you, 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 you have, I don't know how you go home and look at yourself at night. I, I, and I'm not trying to be funny, I'm not trying to be, I just don't, not understand, how come every time we come to this table, get on Zoom or whatever. If it's not your way, you want it in the highway. You don't want it, you don't want no part of it. You try to make everybody think that the city council is doing everything to try to bring the city down. But if the people who are listening, listen, and if the newspaper would write what was said and not take bits and pieces out of it. Then this city would know what was really going on. I am so tired of people coming to me, asking me why y'all can't get along, why is he not doing this, why is y'all not doing this? And you said it at the meeting, when we was at the. And you said it at the meeting when we was at the college. We are supposed to be one body. We're supposed to support everything. We're not just supposed to sit here and like I asked for the information two weeks ago for you to bring it to me on the day, two weeks later, and tell me that this is an emergency, that it a must, that it has to be done. This Ford has been preaching this sermon ever since I've been on this council. Me and her been on this council together. Don't wait till the last minute to give me anything and then tell me it's an emergency.
Ms. Crockett, I started in November, in November.
Okay, but no, you.
In November.
Okay, you started in November. But when you, okay, I'm still got the floor, uh, Robert's rules of order. Um, you started in November. When you brought it to us in November, we asked for, well, I know I did. We asked for more detailed information. It is now February, and we still have not got that detailed information. I asked you just two weeks ago to get the information to show us everything, because like I said, I, I can read a little bit. Mr. Valley confirmed that I read the sentence right, and I think he was kind of like in May, I mean, uh, English or something. So he know if it was punctuated right and I read with the emphasis where it needs to be. But what I'm saying is, two weeks ago, from what you said at this table tonight and said, you did not make an attempt to get another bid. You said in your mind, and it's just me talking. Well, I'm gonna take it back to him Tuesday night, put it on the table, and talk real loud and make people back out and grab them what I want to, what they wanted, when you have not. You have not given us anything different from November the third to February the fifteenth. And it was asked of you in a twenty minute discussion, me sitting down there, asking you what we, what I want it, because I don't know what the rest of them. That would make me clear with what was being hate. Ms. Helen got the, uh, emails that were sent, and that's what brought up the discussion when it said in the email that the twenty two thousand, whatever, whatever dollars included the, uh, setup fee. You had gave us a piece of paper, and I don't have mine, that said it was twenty two thousand plus the three, three thousand six, six hundred dollars. So I was just asking for clarity, but you felt like, I don't have to give them anything. They don't have to just go with what I say. That's how I feel that you felt, because if you felt in another kind of way, you really wanted what was the best interest of this city. After we left the meeting, when I returned to work on the next day, if I was the CEO of this city, my first priority, knowing that the broadband and the service and everything were in dire need, my first thing would have been, Mr. Vale, can you please give me an updated, itemized thing because the council, be it because the council is wanting to see it. But you sit in this chair tonight and told me, you didn't even make an attempt. So who's not cooperating with who?
And you couldn't have been more than me. If it was that guy. Not far.
Conversation. Do we want to have the water company or not? We, we have the money to, in that fund of three hundred.
He's saying that we don't have a proof for that, but I, that's just me. I don't. Cause he said.
I understand.
Do you, okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I understand we have the money. Is that right in that fund? Three hundred thousand dollars. Is that right, Matt?
Sandy, what, what do you, what do you call it? It was written, the balance is at stake in that account for the rescue act. So Ms. Ramsey says about three hundred and ten thousand dollars are in that account. But final ruling from federal government says we can transfer that over and spend all of it to help the water department on its bills. They didn't say that in May, but they have recently, in the last few weeks, said that. And Ms. Weber has come to me and showed me some of these issues. And now we can spend that three hundred thousand plus the one point one we're going to get in May this year to help rework these problems. I'm just, it's not what I want. It's what the city needs. I don't want servers. I, the city needs servers. So it's not about what I want. It's about what's good for the city.
Okay, but.
And I would encourage you to think about what's in the best interest of the city, so playing games.
Now, we're the one playing.
Wild games and all those other things.
We're the one playing the game.
Just, just help us solve the problems for the city. That's all I'm asking you to do.
Okay, well, I need to ask you.
My personal problems.
Okay, why?
Our mutual constituents who use this record, who use these services, who use our water company, and they need help. You have the ability to give it to them. I'm asking you to do so. Tell me.
We've already done that, but why, why, okay, if you're saying that this is what you need, you know we need these services. Why, so you mean that you weren't gonna put in no more effort because you did work in November? You weren't gonna try to get nothing to try to help us improve it in February?
To my knowledge, you asked for a copy of everything, and that's what we got.
Now, you keep saying.
That's what I recall.
Please.
That's what I recall. The last record of everything, six months member, and from the day, and this is what I received you. And then you asked a question. I'm trying to answer it for you.
No, you.
That's what I recall you asking.
Ms. Ramsey.
And that's what we got you. Now you're saying you want something else.
No, 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 no. Anybody that want to hear this, because do y'all record this, Mr. Teller, for me, Mr.? Anybody that want to hear this can, can go back and ask KJIW to ask them how that you can get this information. Ms. Ramsey, Mr. St. Columbia, everybody sitting around this table, Miss Davis, and Mr. Vale. We did, I did a twenty minute discussion on what I wanted you to have for us before tonight. You put no effort into doing any of that.
No.
Those, those quotes are from November. We said at the table that they were not, it was not what we needed. Well, I said, it was not what I needed to make a decision. You sit here and told us, but now you want to make it seem like you gave it. You not doing, Mayor, you did not give us what, you did not give us what we asked for.
And all honesty, I, I know if that's how you feel.
That was what I'm saying. She can tell.
Ms. Crockett, if Ms. Ramsey feels that way, if you feel that way, then that's fine.
No.
I know, Ms. Crockett. All I'm asking you to do is to help this city. That's all. If you want to make it a fight with me, fine, but I'm.
You the one making another fight. You the one making another fight.
I'll tell you, I'm sorry if you feel that way.
You are, man.
The best I can.
No, you don't.
Ms. Crockett.
No, you don't.
I have done the best I can, and all I'm doing is asking you to do the best we can as a city to provide for the water department, to provide for our citizens, get the servers.
Y'all listen to them.
We've been talking about this for months and months. We have three hundred something thousand dollars in rescue act fund. We can use that to pay our water bills and to help the water department. We can do that tonight. I'm asking you to do it. I'm not talking about history or.
Okay, well.
It's not about history, right, man? And all that, it's whatever.
I could.
I don't want to talk to the public, man.
I have a question. You saying that we have three hundred and something thousand dollars. You knew prior to this meeting that they were coming. Wait, wait, wait. I got the floor now. You know, wait a minute.
I want to do it.
No, I did not say that. So don't try to.
Well, I said, I mean, that's.
Okay, well, the rules of order, I have the floor. And while the rules of order, I have the floor. I have the floor.
Accusations.
No, I'm not.
If any of the Robert's rules of order, I'm right of personal privilege. When you make personal.
I did not, I did not. You didn't even let me finish my sentence. What I said, you knew prior to this meeting that the water, the property was in this. While we can have some saying, okay, y'all, he gonna, uh, break out. We still got three hundred thousand dollars. Are we going on what you're saying? And I remember that when Mr. Turner stood up and said we had nine thou, nine hundred some thousand dollars in it, you told him to quit lying to us. So if we ain't got that work, I want you to quit lying to me.
So when I were saying I'm lying, I guess, I don't think, I'm not trying to point fingers. Dude, he said, she said, we had.
Well, when you did some showing, we got three hundred thousand dollars. You know, you said in a, a meeting that just because.
Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett.
Some thousand dollars.
I was talking.
I mean, that we had that much, got to come be some bills and, and not be paid.
And you, Ms. Crockett, this is why people don't understand why we can't get along. All we're trying to do is help the water department, help get our service fixed, which we've been talking about since November. Now, who said what, when, and whose fault, whatever. That's what they need. They came here and asked you. I didn't. I gave them permission to ask you.
For the, for the record, um, right now, we still have a corner. Right now, we still have a corner. But for the record, this discussion about the water department, our funds that are outside of general funds that are held in the water department, and they're exclusive to the water department, they've been used as such. So all funds we've discussed with it have not do with general payroll or general funds. There's water department funds on that. I just wanted to make that statement for the record, so the citizens understand that we're only talking about water department funds.
We have now lost the corner. Thank y'all.